I would like to call to order the October 1st, 2018 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners Work Session. Welcome everyone. It's good to see everybody here today. First up is approval of our work session agenda which you all have before you, including the changes on page three. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda with changes? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. First up, under discussion items, is Cabarrus Arena and Event Center, and we're glad to have Kenny Robinson with us today.
Just one title, grab the mouse.
No problem.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for allowing me time before you this morning, this afternoon rather. As you know, SMG has managed Cabarrus Arena now for 13 years, and I wanted to take time to express my gratitude for allowing us to do that and to continue doing so. We think it's been a successful partnership, and during the course of that partnership, we have always published financial reports at the end of every month and then the year in financial reports, but there's a lot of things that those financial statements don't show. We decided to do something different this year. We published an annual report. In the process of doing so, we learned that we missed some things, but in the interest of brevity, we decided we'll include some of those things next year and probably have a 20-page report instead of a 15-page report. But again, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to manage the venue. As I talk to my peers within SMG, one of the comments that I hear over and over again is that the relationship that we have between SMG, Cabarrus County, all the county departments here in Concord is unlike any other in the company. My peers say time after time, "I wish I was there and I wish I had that relationship," because at times, the relationship between municipalities or advisory boards can be contentious, and we absolutely do not have that here. And for that, I thank you. The charge that we're given in our management agreement with Cabarrus County is to increase gross revenue at the facility, to decrease the operating deficit, and to increase facility usage. And I wanted to give you a few ideas of how we're doing on that. This first slide, and this is not part of the 15-page annual report, this is in, same information presented a different way. This first slide is the 10-year trend of the adjusted gross revenue, and it's called net income here, but operating deficit's actually what it is. The top orange line, the solid orange line, is our adjusted gross revenue. That's all the money that comes in except for ticket sales. Ticket sales don't remain with the venue, they tend to leave with concert promoters or event promoters and artists. But you can see the trend. We ended 2018 at a little over $2.1 million in revenue. The dotted orange line is where we would be if we took the base year in 2008 and just increased it based on the rate of inflation only. So you see where gross revenue is growing faster than the rate of inflation, and 2018 that difference was $400,000. The blue lines at the bottom are our operating deficit. In 2008, you know, it was somewhere around 3/4 of a million dollars. At the end of last year, it was about $500,000. Again, the solid blue line is where we actually ended the year. The dotted blue line would be the base year, just adjusted for inflation, so you can see that the deficit is getting smaller compared to inflation. It's a good trend. We hope to continue, and we think we have some ways to make both of those results continue to be positive at an increasing rate. The third major charge with our contract is to increase activity at the event. Again, a 10-year trend, and I want to explain what an event day is. If we were to have a wedding reception and a circus performance on the same day, that counts as two event days. So over the course of 2018, we had 268 event days, but that was made up of 171 different events. 268 event days was not a record. 2016 with 272 event days was our record-setting year, but the 171 event days that we had last year was a record. Attendance was not a record last year, it was a little shy of 300,000. I think our record was also in 2016 of about 304,000. So the three major charges in our management agreement, I think we've at least met, and some situations exceeded them fairly handily. To give you an idea of those 171 events, I've tried to separate those in categories to give you an idea of what, where the real attendance, where the real profitability, where the real number of event days lies. I'm gonna go left to right in this slide. Consumer shows, those are the things like Christmas Made in the South, the Holman Garden Show, the Carolina bridal fair. That dominates our event calendar, both in number of event days, attendance, and net income. As we slide over to the second category, assemblies, those are things, graduations, whether it's high school or community college graduations, religious ceremonies. A lot of folks show up, but we don't do many of those. Cabarrus County Fair in our world is its own category, that's third. It covers nine event days, but there's 65,000 or so people, some years more, that show up, so it helps us with our attendance. Sporting events are things like cheerleading competitions, AAU wrestling, jiu-jitsu competitions. They make a big difference. Proportionally, net income, they're more profitable for us than even concerts are. We move to the next set of events, entertainment. Those are concerts, those are circus performances, that is professional wrestling. Performing arts in our world is essentially dance competitions. Social events are wedding receptions, anniversary parties, birthday parties, something we've seen a little bit of an increase over the last year or so, quinceaneras. We did about 45 of those events last year. Each one is unique, each one probably takes as much effort from our staff as doing something as big as a concert. Next to last is business meetings. We do a good many of them, but there's not much profit there. But that's okay, it helps us use the building. And then the other events are the things that really don't fit one of the other categories, things like dog shows, car auctions, alpaca shows, barbecue cooking competitions. Anything you can think of that doesn't fit one of those other categories is what falls into the other event type. I said a minute ago, we had 171 events, 171 individual events, but over the course of fiscal year 2018, we had 1,100, and I think it was 74, different sales inquiries, whether it was a phone call, an email, someone wanted to bring their event to Cabarrus Arena. So what happened to the other 929 that didn't turn into events? The bottom line really tells the story. We simply didn't have the date available. Most folks want to do events on weekends, mainly Saturdays, some Fridays, some Sundays, with only 50 weekends, 52 weekends available. It's tough to find a spot for all those events. You see the other reasons, and I'm going from bottom to top. Our policy is that we do our own catering, we provide our own concessions so that we can control quality and control pricing. That's an issue sometimes, especially with some of our requests for business meetings and for social events. I'm gonna skip other, that really is the catch-all category, that we really can't identify what the reason was that it didn't turn into event. Venue locations, not nearly as much of a problem as it used to be. We know that urban sprawl occurs, and Charlotte's getting closer to us, and it seems like that drive from that population center is not as long as it used to be for folks. And then we get into pricing, whether it's food and beverage pricing predominantly with catering, although our prices are extremely competitive with those that we compete directly against, and then price for the venue, not disrespecting the Rowan County Fairground, but we compete for some of the same events, and that facility's just a little different facility than us, and it has different amenities in it. It has a different set of pricing expectations. Something else that we wanted to report was, these are guest survey results. A company called Turnkey Intelligence is a company that started doing guest surveys for the NFL and NFL stadiums. SMG contracted with these folks about a year and a half ago, and this is our first full year's worth of data of surveys of our guests. The colored numbers is Cabarrus Arena, the middle set of numbers is, I'll call, I'll use the term "the all-star venue" that Turnkey Intelligence knows about, and the bottom is SMG as a whole. If you take all 150 or so venues that SMG manages in North America, come up with an average, that's the SMG number at the bottom. So I'll start, and I'm gonna go left to right with overall. Cabarrus Arena scored 8.2, SMG average was 8, and the all-star venue was 8.9. Going to arrival, this really is from the time folks leave their house till they get out of the car in the parking lot. We scored 8.2. Honestly, I thought that was pretty good when we are compared to the all-star venue at 8.5, because our limiting factor is the same thing all of you know is essentially Highway 49 and Old Airport Road are only two entrances, and some events that can be problematic. Security is a general sense of security that patrons feel. We scored very well. I'll talk in a little while about some things we're wanting to do to enhance that, but we scored pretty, pretty well with other venues. Our staff, this is something that I feel proud of, scored 8.8. The all-star venue was 9.2, SMG was 8.6. Our staff takes pride in what they do. Our guests have said that they are helpful, they're courteous, they're friendly, they treat people well, and that's something I think we all can be proud of. The environment, the purple column, that's the general building itself, the comments that we hear, and we scored 8.7. The all-star venue was 9.2, and the company average was 8.4. The thing that we hear from both our guests and our clients, day after day, is that they can't believe that the venue's in its 16th year of operation. They remark about how clean it is, how well-maintained it is, how up-to-date it is. Through your budgeting process, you make funds available for us to stay up-to-date on a lot of amenities. Thank you very much for doing that, that helps with that category. Technology, the blue one, we're a little behind, both the industry and the company on that. You took steps last month in your meetings to address the main problem, and that's cellphone reception and Wi-Fi service. We've had Wi-Fi service in the building for five or six years. The truth is, folks don't like to pay for it. They're used to their cellphone working wherever they go, and when they have to pay for Wi-Fi service, it becomes a negative in their mind. Next to the last column, food and beverage, I want to draw some particular attention to this. Cabarrus Arena scored 8.2. We were the all-star venue in North America for that. Those of you that have been out there for a catered event know that our food is very, very good. Just by nature of this survey, it tends to concentrate on concessions operations, and it's very, very good as well, both in terms of value and of product quality, something to be proud of. And then the last column, departure, is essentially, how did you feel from the time you walked out of the doors of the event till you got in your car and you left the premises? 8.5's not a bad score, again, considering that we have Old Airport Road and Highway 49 as our only real means of egress. There are a couple other survey-type things I wanted to bring to your attention. Good or bad, everyone's able to go to most businesses' homepage through Google Buy Business and make any comment they want to, rate anything they want to. We averaged four and a quarter stars out of five. If you take the four-star results and the five-star results, add them together, it was 83%. And the 17% that were either indifferent or made negative comment, really, they concern cellphone reception and not wanting to pay a parking charge for some events. One of the things that's specifically mentioned in our management agreement with the county are, how do our event promoters feel about the job we do? These are the folks that actually rent the building to produce an event. We send each one of those a survey, and 94% of those folks said they were very satisfied with the service and the value and the things we provided for them. The other 6% were satisfied, and every single one of them said they were, would most definitely recommend having an event there again. Something we can be proud of, and that's not an anomaly for last year, that's been the trend for many, many years. Some of the other things that are not part of a slide presentation that I wanted to mention to you briefly is that community outreach is something that we make a point to do. We're part of the community, we want to be viewed as a community asset, we want to welcome as many folks as we can to take use of the facility at Cabarrus Arena. And one of the things we do is offer a discount program to charities, governmental organizations, other groups that are doing work for the greater good of our community. And last year, we were able to offer in excess of half a million dollars in discounts for those groups so that they could afford to do business, to do, put on whatever type of program it was they wanted to do that helps us as a community. We also engaged 20 nonprofit groups for fundraising at the arena. Those groups work as extension of our staff through working in concession stands, help parking cars, help pick up, clean up after events. Those 20 groups last year raised over $40,000. And in the 10 or 11 years since that program's been in existence, the total's over $700,000 now. So we're proud that we're able to get money back into the community through those groups to continue with the good work that they do. Something else we do is, for the first time last year, we partnered with Cabarrus County School System through their OCS program to allow 12 high school students to come in, six the first half of the school year, six the second half of the school year. Every day, they come to work at Cabarrus Arena for two or three hours. They have routine tasks, they do most days. A couple days, we'll mix it up so that it helps these young folks achieve some of their coursework they need for graduation from high school, but it provides them some skills that they can use after they get out of school and enter the workforce. Very good program, it works out exceptionally well for Cabarrus Arena, and I'm proud that we're taking a part of it. We also work with several nonprofits at different times during the year for them to bring disabled folks in, to evaluate their skills, evaluate their abilities, so that they'll know best how to match them up with potential employers. Typically, they don't come to work for Cabarrus Arena. There's some funding through other government resources that pays for their wages for those few days they're working with us. It's strictly a benefit to them to be evaluated, to understand what, so that those groups can understand what their abilities are and better match them with a long-term employer, but there is some benefit for us, because honestly, they work as an extension of our staff as well. And we make it a point when we go to hire folks, our payroll's about 125 people, depending on the season, it may be down to 100. But when it's time to recruit people again for the next season, we make it a point to solicit folks that are disabled and veterans. I can report to you that at least 10% of our employees have self-identified as being disabled or being veterans, and honestly, some of those folks have trouble finding work in other places, and we're proud that we can help them meet the demands of their life through work at Cabarrus Arena. Outside of those things, I want to tell you a few things that we've done internally and operationally within the arena that set us up for the future. In 2018, we split our sales and marketing department into two separate functions. Funding through the budget process allowed us to get half a person that we could dedicate to marketing. We've never done that before. We'd been fortunate for years just to answer the phone and book events. Now that our calendar is saturated, we need to go find other events. That marketing person helps us do that. The marketing position was instrumental in creating a new website that we put into production this year that covers two different needs. One, that guests that are coming to our events have, they just want to know directions to the arena, can I bring in a bottle of water, do you have concession stands, those general questions, and then address a whole different set of questions that event promoters have. That new website is something we can be proud of. For the first time, we have a social media presence, believe it or not. Up until about 16 months ago, we didn't have a Facebook page that was active. We didn't have, we still don't use Twitter, but we didn't have an Instagram account. We've done that. We're starting to see some benefits. It's hard to measure them, but there's a fair amount of conversation that goes on on those platforms. We spent a lot of time with, in the sales and marketing department, benchmarking, measuring where we were in the marketplace. Are our rental fees where they need to be for the services we provide in this market? And probably as importantly, now that we have a track record of 300,000 people that come to 171 different events, over 268 event days, now we're able to go out and talk to businesses about sponsorship and advertising with us, something we've never been able to do. That's something we're gonna do in 2019, and hopefully, this time next year, we'll be able to report that we've increased gross revenue a little more than modestly because of that sponsorship revenue. We've also taken a focus on generating new events during the week, during the business week. We all know we don't have a hotel close to the arena, and that's a detriment, but there are things we can do. We've come up with some discount programs, ways to entice businesses to come out to Cabarrus Arena for their small meeting. We have several clients that'll come out once or twice a year with 12 people. Not a huge gross revenue number, it's not a huge net income number, but it's more than zero, and it's worth doing. We're continuing to do things like that to attract new local businesses. We've seen some success, I really think in the next year, we'll see even more success with that. Outside of sales and marketing, with our friends at Cabarrus County's Infrastructure and Asset Management, over the last year, we've been able to install some aisle safety lighting in the arena itself. That's something that mainly used for concerts, shows when we have to turn the lights out. Folks can still see to get up and down the steps, up and down the aisles, and be safe doing that. To keep the facility updated, we've been able to renovate the event center restrooms, new tile on the floors, change some, a little bit of the tile on the wall, excuse me. We've been able to do the same thing in Cabarrus rooms, restrooms. That's the building that in the future probably lends itself to most growth, because of the environment lends itself to business meetings and social functions. We've also done some, made some changes in the lobby of that building to make it more attractive, less dated. Again, the venue's 16 years old, and we all change decor in our houses every so often for the same reason, we need to change it out there. Things just look dated from time to time. So that's what 2018 looked like. I'll give you an idea of what we're looking at in 2019 especially, and some of these may move forward into 2020. But sponsorship sales is a big one, we think that's some low-hanging fruit. We don't really know exactly what revenue's out there. I don't think $50,000 a year initially is too much of a stretch, once we find the right folks and be able to make the right sales pitch to those companies, but I think we can do some things to give some companies some visibility out there and help our bottom line at the same time. We're gonna continue to push local events, business meetings, and on weekends where we have trouble filling dates, not all of our buildings are used every single weekend. Whether or not, let's see if we can do some local things, whether it's a cooperative extension that has their Herb Fest out there, or Get Creative with, last year it was a barbecue cooking competition. Do everything we can to maximize exposure for the venue, and if we make any profit at all, it still contributes to the bottom-line success of the venue. This November, November 1st, we have a Gary Allen concert. This is the first time we've ever done a co-promotion in a concert. The way a co-promotion works is, we partner with a concert promoter to the point that we're able to break even at the event. We're not gonna lose money, the venue's protected, but by us contributing a little bit of the risk, splitting some of our revenue with a concert promoter makes them more likely to come and do events with us. That's the reason we have Gary Allen on a Thursday night that's likely to do 3,500 or 4,000 people. That makes the venue more attractive, and it gives us more dates to do concerts. Naturally, they would like to be there on Friday or Saturday night, but if cheerleading competitions there are making more revenue, more profit for us, maybe a Thursday night or a Sunday night's the next best thing, and this makes us more attractive to that. We're gonna explore event creation. You may remember the Carolina bridal fair was something that we created in-house several years ago, sold it to a private citizen. The event still takes place at the arena, we don't show the revenue for that event on our books any longer, but it's still an event there that it still makes a profit for the arena, and it still contributes to the bottom line. We're gonna try to create some events like that again. We've got to find the right combination, and we've got to talk about the level of risk that's acceptable, that's acceptable both to SMG and Cabarrus County, but you'll hear some more of that, about that in a few months, definitely by budget time, so we can identify what those are. It'll probably take us a year before we have that first event. We definitely want to expand the use of those nonprofit groups. I mentioned 20 groups that raised $40,000 this year and $700,000 over the last 10 years or so. I think we can still expand that. I think we can expand by four or five groups. It becomes even more of an extension of our workforce, a more economical way to have labor performed, and it still gets more money out of the community. I personally would like to see that, $75,000 or so a year going back to the community through that work, and I think we can achieve that. Some of the infrastructure improvements that through your budget process you've addressed are replacing the wallpaper in the Cabarrus room. Again, this is updating that part of the venue to make it more attractive for the business meetings that we hope to attract. The locker rooms in bottom of the arena, we're gonna redo those. When the complex was built, they looked a lot like a high school gym locker room, and that was the purpose they were intended to serve. Now we need something more like a celebrity dressing room. That's what we see more and more of a need for, and we're doing things to address that through replacing tile, stall partitions, lockers, that sort of thing. And the big project, big project this year is to change the lighting controls in the building. What's there was state-of-the-art 15 years ago. 10 years ago, it was outdated. Now we're looking for ways to improve the quality of lighting and our ability to control that lighting. It's a big project, I think we'll probably see early next summer it being completed, and it'll be a much better environment for some of our shows to produce their product in. And the last thing, I mentioned something about security when we were talking about survey results. This is the one-year anniversary of the mass shooting in Las Vegas at the Country Music Festival. We learned a lot during that subsequent investigation. It's been about two and a half years since the shooting at the, bombing at the Ariana Grande Concert in London. That was a venue that SMG managed. Bombing occurred outside the venue, but we learned a lot through that. We know we have exposures, not just at Cabarrus Arena, but at any venue. You're seeing changes, even something like a high school football game, everyone goes through metal detectors and security screenings. We feel like we need to introduce that at Cabarrus Arena to every event that it makes sense to do from a practicality standpoint. We'll be talking about strategies to do that. We've been developing plans on how to do that, now it's to the implementation phase, and over the next six or eight months, you'll hear things about that. In closing, I wanted to say one more time, thank you for allowing SMG to manage Cabarrus Arena. Cabarrus Arena. Thank you for the support you give us. Uh, 2018 was a good year. 2019, even though we're only a quarter into it, is shaping up to be as good as 2018. I'm cautiously optimistic that it'll be a little bit better from, uh, just judging by some projections I did last week, but thank you very much for your support.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Kenny?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. I have to honestly say that every experience that I've had out at, at the arena has been a very good experience, you know, in, you know, the cleanliness, uh, the courtesy of the staff and the knowledge and efficiency. I think you guys do a great job.
Thank you, Commissioner Shu. I appreciate that.
Okay. Other questions? I had just a couple, um, just curious, um, I noticed on, on your list of, of reasons that, that people did not choose the arena, and the, the outside catering rule was one of those. How would it impact operations if you changed that rule? Would that impact the other events that? And first of all, let me say, the catering at the arena is excellent. Um, I mean, I've been there for breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and they, they do a great job, so I, I can't, but for whatever reason, I, I know that's a question that you get asked a lot.
Uh, there are a couple of things there that give me reason for concern. One is there's definitely some health-related issues. Conceivably, you could open it up to licensed caterers only could, could come in. Probably would want to attach a fee to that, but the trouble with doing it is, say someone comes to a wedding reception at Cabarrus Arena and the food is terrible. They may not know that that food came from XYZ catering.
Right, right.
All they're going to say is, I went to the arena and that food was terrible.
Right.
Whereas.
Very good point.
You, you said something different. You, the food's good, we can, we can control the quality, um, better that way. We have, in certain circumstances, opened it up to outside caterers if there's a particular need that we can't fulfill.
Right.
Something, um, a particular ethnic cuisine, uh, that we just have no expertise in how to, to prepare, we can partner with some caterers that specialize in that, and we'll let those folks come in at a certain fee.
Right. The other question that I had was the amount of discounts for charitable organizations, that sort of thing, is almost exactly the same amount as our net loss for the year. Are those dates that, that would go unused perhaps, uh, if not for those kind of meetings? I mean, they probably don't do the prime time.
They, they don't. In most cases, yes, they would date, be dates that we would be vacant.
So, so the revenue we do get from that is that much more than zero?
It is.
Yeah.
It is. Uh, we, we tend, there are a couple of exceptions, and I, I say a couple, I can think of three during the course of the year that are on the weekends, the rest are in the middle of the week.
Right.
Where there's nothing going on.
Kind of downtime, harder to sell.
Yep, and those, those three that I mentioned, one is on the midway that we absolutely would not use on a Saturday afternoon.
Outside, yeah.
One is, uh, is a lunch on a Saturday morning, which we do have the ability to turn the room around and do something that night in there if we need to. Um, and, uh, the third one, actually, it's at a weekend that it wouldn't make any difference either. It's one of those hard-to-feel weekends based on school calendars and that sort of thing.
Yeah. Um, I know you, you picked up some, some new events this year, like the Hospital Foundation banquet, which, uh, which they did a, they, you did a, a great job of really making that space look more upscale. Are there any, any things, any needs that we have in that area that would expand the opportunities for other types of events, or is it working pretty good?
It works pretty good. Our real limiting factor, that particular event you were talking about was in Gold Hall, the most remote place from the kitchen. We have equipment to do it, it's just, they, they don't.
You just had to travel.
You just have to travel back and forth. Um, the one thing we could do, and I don't think it's time to do this.
The people attending didn't know that.
They don't know that. Uh, the, the one thing we could do in the future, and it, we're not ready for this yet. I would say we're a year, 18 months away at the earliest. Be investment in a small box truck just to facilitate equipment from the kitchen, uh, down to Gold Hall. Beyond that, there's, we're pretty well set. Now, we, we could make an argument for, we're able to, without renting China now, we're able to feed about 300 people. Uh, that covers the vast majority of what we do. The rest of the time, we'll just rent China. Don't know that it's worth spending 30 or $50,000 on China that we would use half a dozen times a year.
Right.
So I think we're pretty equipped, pretty well for what it is we do. In the future, if there happens to be a hotel that would, uh, be open close by in the next several years, we would have conversations about some new things to, to match the, the capability.
Right.
But right now, I think we're pretty, pretty well set.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We appreciate you being here today. Okay, we move now to parking deck update from Kyle.
Just a quick update on where we are in the parking deck. The elevator shafts have already been poured. Um, we're looking to start pouring the top floor, uh, in the next few weeks. You can see they're kind of working their way up there, and our masonry is also starting to work up the walls towards that area also. Um, all of the stairwells are finished, brushed in. Um, tread is put in for ocean safety. We have the intersection of Spring and Corbin is open, and we're actually starting to work with the city on getting their specs for the actual crosswalk work that'll have to be done. That'll be one of the last things that's done. Um, and our biggest news is that on the night of the 16th, I'm sorry, 15th into the 16th and 16th to the 17th, um, we'll be shutting down Market Street for the crane laydown. So the crane is actually going away for good. Um, and our communications and outreach department will be putting out that information into the blast that was just approved by the city today. And again, that's to disassemble the crane and remove it from the site.
Well, they already have some experience at that since the crane went down for the hurricane and then went back up again, so.
It'll be a little bit different in terms of disassembling, but, and hopefully not with the, um, urge that we did it as quickly as we did last time, but yes.
All right. Okay, any questions for Kyle? Thank you. Okay, we are happy to have Reed Thorenberg from Cardinal Innovations with us for their dashboard report.
Good af, uh, no. Uh, good afternoon, Chairman Morris, Commissioners, County Staff. Uh, glad to be with you today. Uh, I do want to say a brief kudos on a couple of things for you. Uh, one is you're talking about the arena of this, in 2018, uh, Cardinal had the opportunity to sponsor a We've Got Talent event, uh, there for persons with intellectual and developmental disabilities who wanted, it's kind of a talent show for those individuals, and a really great turnout. It was the first one. We're hoping to make that an annual event, uh, and hoping to be able to use the arenas, arena, so that was a really good, uh, good event for, uh, the community as well as providers and the members that they serve. Uh, also wanted to say thank you for your support for the behavioral health community in Cabarrus County, uh, all of your efforts as a county, and again, as a, as a whole with, with stakeholders and providers and representatives from the community that come together to address the behavioral health needs of Cabarrus County. Uh, I consider you, uh, to be a leader in that category, uh, and, and almost on the cutting edge when it comes to addressing the needs of individuals with, uh, disabilities in Cabarrus County. So thank you, uh, for your support, uh, in those efforts as well. So, what you have, uh, before you've had the opportunity to look at is the third quarter reporting dashboard for maintenance of effort funds, uh, that are pass-through dollars, uh, that, that are passed through, uh, from the county through Cardinal Innovations Healthcare to providers who, uh, offer direct services to individuals in the categories that you see listed. Uh, you will, at the end of this month, uh, be receiving the fourth quarter, uh, report through, uh, the end of June, uh, of 2018. So on the first page, uh, you'll see a Cabarrus funding summary. Uh, you'll see that as of, uh, the reporting here is May, providers have 90 days from date of service to submit claims for reimbursement. Uh, and as a result, that's why there is a delay in the reporting numbers, is that we want to, uh, each, uh, quarter be able to bring you as close to the end of that, uh, reporting period, those 90 days as possible with the numbers. So you'll see some numbers through May 24th, uh, on this report. So as of that date, you'll see we're 72.3% of the overall, uh, maintenance of effort dollars had been accounted for and, uh, paid out to providers. Uh, you'll see that, uh, the highest amount category is the, uh, advanced access, uh, for Daymark Recovery Services, who also partners with Sheriff Riley and the Sheriff's Department on, um, behavioral health case management in the jail, uh, working with individuals there, uh, both, uh, pre and post-release, uh, for their needs as well. So, uh, Daymark, uh, for their advanced access for, uh, additional hours for walk-ins for individuals that are seeking outpatient services, uh, those are available, uh, through Daymark, uh, as well as, uh, mobile crisis, and then also facility-based crisis, uh, to Cabarrus County. Then you'll see, uh, the next page, you'll see the number of members served by age and diagnosis. Uh, one of the trends that you will see is an increase in the number of child members that are served for, uh, mental health services that continues to climb and increase. Uh, could be contributed to various reasons, uh, again, with the start of, uh, a school year, or at the end of the school year, or in between, you could see a, a additional number of individuals that are, um, referred for outpatient services through a guidance counselor, through a school social worker, uh, through a, uh, community advocacy agency, uh, for those, uh, child members. Could also, uh, also be a result of an assessment that's completed, uh, in an alternate setting that identifies a need, and therefore there's a referral for outpatient care and/or residential And then you'll see, uh, as far as members served and expenses by service category, uh, you'll see Medicaid funding first. Uh, you'll see the highest, uh, number of members served through outpatient services. Uh, and then you'll see the, uh, highest expenditure category, uh, is through, uh, Innovation C waiver services for persons with intellectual and developmental disabilities. For, uh, members served and expenses, uh, via state funding, again, uh, see a, a similar comparison there with Medicaid. You'll see outpatient is the, the highest category there for members served. And then for, uh, expenses, uh, by category, you'll see that residential services, uh, inpatient services, and community services are very close, uh, together there in terms of the expenses per category. The next, uh, sheet shows the members served and expense amounts, uh, for facility-based crisis and mobile crisis management services. Again, these are services that attend to an individual's, uh, need, uh, when they're in a crisis or at the time of, uh, requiring, uh, acute, uh, service provision to address, uh, crisis needs in the community. Uh, and you'll see a comparison there, uh, between Medicaid funding and, uh, state funding. So you'll see that, uh, facility-based crisis, uh, for Medicaid, uh, and for, uh, state, tends to, uh, have the, the higher cost population served, uh, by dollar amounts and by the number of individuals served. And then, uh, you'll see, on the next page, you'll see provider information, which is a summary of the number of providers across 20 counties, uh, that are, uh, contracted with Cardinal Innovations Healthcare through Managed Care Services. Uh, you'll also see the top 10 providers by individuals served and a type of provider as it relates, um, to Cabarrus County. And then you'll also see a summary of the number of calls and speed to answer for our access 1-800, uh, number, uh, and then the call abandonment rate, uh, which I'd like to say that we do pride ourselves on being able to respond very quickly, uh, as well as to control, uh, the time, uh, that someone may be, uh, on hold or awaiting a response, uh, from our 1-800 number for individuals that are calling in to access care and services. And then after that, you'll see, uh, a summary as well as an explanation of, uh, mandated service categories, uh, expense types, uh, and then, uh, descriptions of county-funded Are there any questions or comments?
Okay, questions for Reed?
Reed, these synonyms I'm not sure, familiar with. Family-based crisis, I pretty much understand that. So what about the mobile crisis management? Can you explain what that is?
So mobile my, crisis management is a 24/7, 365 response from Daymark Recovery Services, who operates that, that service, uh, for individuals in the community who are experiencing a crisis and are requiring that, uh, they be seen by an individual, uh, for, uh, immediate assessment or intervention, and then as a result of that, potentially follow-up to a, a referral back to services, outpatient services, or potentially a referral to a crisis service at the time, uh, that an individual is seeing them or is, is, uh, at their place of origin where they're experiencing the crisis at.
Reed, I ask, probably ask this every year, but on your distribution of, of the funds, the local funds, some of the money is leaving the county and going to Union County and Davidson County. Why is that?
So what, the Daymark Recovery Services operates all of the facility-based crisis, uh, units in the Piedmont area. So we have a Davidson County facility-based crisis, we have a Union County facility-based crisis, and we have a Cabarrus County facility-based crisis. All three of those crisis units are open and available to residents from any of the five counties within the Piedmont area to serve their crisis needs. So the way Daymark operates is that if, for whatever reason, let's say the Cabarrus facility is full, uh, at the time that an individual's referred, or there is a walk-in seeking facility-based crisis, Daymark makes these other, uh, facilities available, including, uh, even, uh, a facility in Iredale County that they operate as well in the Statesville area for those individuals to seek care rather than having to turn them away, uh, or referring them, uh, somewhere else outside of the Piedmont area for care.
So what, what, as far as Cabarrus County, and probably the answer is going to probably be statewide, but what is the number one need right now to address the needs of, of the community that, that's in the mental health?
Well, I know that the Mental Health Advisory Coalition has been addressing, uh, several of the needs. Uh, certainly, uh, I think residential care for individuals experiencing, uh, mental health needs as well as, uh, substance use. Uh, we've also been working diligently to address, uh, substance use or opioid, uh, related issues as well as, uh, heroin overdose, and just in general, addressing the substance use needs. Historically, the majority of resource, financial resources available for addressing substance use needs has been state dollars, and those funds have not increased, uh, year after year in order to continue to support. I'm hopeful that the state of North Carolina with some new initiatives that are, that are coming out and availability of funding on the federal level will help to supplement some of the state dollars for addressing substance use needs. I would say right now, uh, if you were to talk with, uh, um, the community, the treatment community as a whole, it would be for helping supplement residential resources and then also addressing the, the opioid crisis.
You, you mentioned that the reason why some of the local money was going to other counties, it's because of lack of the facilities here, uh, housing facilities or?
Well, for facility-based crisis, there is a limit to the number of beds.
Right, the beds.
Available, and the need, uh, typically is greater than the number of beds, uh, that are in place, and those beds are limited currently by state capacity for that level of care.
Right.
So they, there are, these programs, I think, would be very interested in growing, uh, the ability to serve additional individuals, but they are limited in capacity by the state under, under that service definition.
So it's, so it's not just Cabarrus County, it's statewide?
That's correct. Yes, that's correct. And the same applies to, uh, child and adolescent facility-based crisis facilities as well. There's one in Mecklenburg that's operated by, uh, Monarch that, uh, serves, uh, a, a child and adolescent individuals from, uh, our catchment area from, by Cardinal Innovations.
So what is the recommendation for someone who comes along and the beds are filled for a family who has a need?
So at the time of the need?
Yes.
So at the time of the need, uh, they would have access to Mobile Engagement, uh, which is the crisis-based, community-based service that could work with them to assess the need, and at the same time, work with Cardinal Innovations. and at the same time work with Cardinal Innovations to help refer an individual to an available service, an available facility. Hopefully, again, one of those additional facilities that Daymark operates that would have an open bed available for that individual.
And do you find, well, I guess the question I would ask is what percentage of the time do you find that you're able to do that?
Within, I would say, an eight to 12-hour period, it would be able to meet, Daymark has been able to meet the need.
So you don't have to go back?
It just may not be at the Cabarrus.
Right. So they may have to travel, but you usually have a place that they can go. They're not just said, "Sorry, we'll get to you when we can."
Right. There is, to my knowledge, there is not a reject policy that applies, but rather a focus on meeting individuals' needs at the time of. And that includes Daymark making available transportation for those individuals between facilities as well.
Thank you.
So that it's not left up to the family.
Just one more question, Mr. Chairman, and Reed, on the reverse scenario that you explained to Mike about Cabarrus County dollars being used for other counties' people that come here, for our facilities. And I think I understood that right. But in the reverse scenario of that, are there other counties' money being used in Cabarrus County as well, whereas we got close to $100,000 of our fund, our annual budget allocated, but it's being used in, like Mike said, Union Davidson County? Does Davidson County and Union County, do they reciprocate in any way and how would it compare to what we're spending?
They contribute as well. The amount is based on, the amount per category of funding depends on the overall amount that's provided by each county. If it's not equivalent, it's not equal across all five counties for the Piedmont area. In terms of accessing services within our network, there was a point in time when we had providers in our traditional five-county area, which started out as Piedmont, where only individuals in those counties could access services in those counties, providers in those counties. What we have done since then is we've opened up all providers, for the most part, in all 20 counties, for individuals who are seeking care to be able to access a continuum of care in any of those 20 counties in order to really not create barriers for individuals who are seeking care. Because what we found is that when we limited the ability for someone to access care, if they really needed that care, couldn't find it in their own area, but there were other providers in other counties who did provide that service and had the capacity, we didn't want to limit an individual's ability to access care. And so we opened up our entire catchment, 20 counties for individuals. So potentially, if there's a need for an individual to access a level of service, facility, some type of service that is not available immediately here locally, again, in those 20 counties or other 19 counties, they would have an opportunity to access care.
Okay. Any other questions? I will encourage all of you to watch the next episode of Out and About, which we will be filming tomorrow, and we'll have Representative from Daymark and Jody Ramirez from handles our stepping up program and other aspects, and we will be talking about these very topics.
Thank you. So if you have any additional questions, comments, feel free to reach out to them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. Okay, now we move to discussion items for action at our regular meeting this month. First up, our North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, solicitation of county legislative goals, and County Manager will talk to us about that.
Okay, well, we've completed the list of your goals and solicited some responses back, and we did get some back from the board to change some wording around. One that you would notice that we did move one of the Medicaid funding, we modified on number, unfunded mandates, 1B. We did have a separate goal in there for community paramedics funding. We moved that up and combined it with B to maintain or increase current levels of Medicaid funding to include reimbursement of options for community paramedics. Originally, that didn't include that second part of the sentence. It was a goal in itself. So in order to reduce the number and condense those, Commissioner Shute recommended that we try to make that, make sense of that with one goal versus two. So we changed the language around it. It worked out very well, and thank you for that recommendation. The other one, as I was just talking with Mr. Thornberg there, one of your goals is exactly that, is that there are a limited amount of facilities in the state. So under mental health, number one, that you are asking for, and the reason why there are is because facilities cannot expand past 16 beds without permission from several different agencies. And this will help us to maybe, if they can modify that to allow those expansions of those facilities, there may be more facilities out there to use. And then the final one that we changed from the original listing was, again, we added the language under early childhood education, request additional funding for early childhood educational programs. From your advisory board, the funding was the number one issue that they were identifying in this preliminary or in their early stages of doing the study. Ms. Thompson, our communications and outreach manager, she also has been reaching out to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, and this goal here sort of models what they're putting in their goals as well for early childhood education. So we think we're covered there. Other than that, I think there was, if any, there was very few modifications, and if they were, they were just grammatical modifications than what the list that you've had. So we are ready to submit upon your approval, and we will get them in before the October 5th deadline.
Okay. Does that, doesn't require a vote on that?
It does, yeah. If you would go ahead and approve these as your goals, and then we can go ahead and do them now.
Okay. So we would need to suspend the rules to take action on this tonight. Do I hear a motion that we suspend the rules? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we'd now entertain a motion to approve the county legislative goals as presented.
A motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes as well. Thank you. Okay, we move now to Public Service Company of North Carolina, easement at West Cabarrus High School, and Jonathan will present that to us.
This is a request that came from Cabarrus County Schools to have a easement for the natural gas line that serves West Cabarrus High School. You're going to see a series of these, I'm sure, with the other utilities providing services at high school, but for us to grant them an easement, it needs to come before the board.
Okay, any questions? Okay, and that will appear on our regular meeting agenda. Okay, from DHS, fiscal year 20, Community Transportation Grant, and we are delighted to have Bob Bushy with us to talk about that.
Thank you. This is our annual 5311 Community Transportation Grant from the state of North Carolina. There are two portions to this grant. We have the administrative portion that covers some salaries and uniforms and items such as that. We also have a capital portion for replacement vehicles. This year, we are requesting $166,736 for administrative with a 15% county match and $126,200 in capital with a 10% county match, for a total funding request of $292,936 with a local share of $37,632. This grant does require a public hearing and adoption of resolutions.
Okay, any questions from Mr. Bushy? All righty, we will schedule that public hearing for our regular meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item, 4.5, request for reallocation of funds for the Franklitz Park restroom project. Susan and Kyle.
I want to do 4.4 first.
Yeah.
Now I'll save for 4.5, too.
Yep, you're here.
Okay.
Proceed.
We'll do 4.4 then. This one's the appropriation of fund balance for landfill fund. During our audit this year, we spoke with our auditors, and we had been recording the funds that we received for selling mulch out of landfill in a liability account, and all we were trying to do was to collect the money, and then we have somebody come on site and mulch up all the yard base. And so we've keeping that liability account, but through discussions with our auditors, they want us to keep it in a revenue and expenditure account. So we changed the books before we closed them for June 30th. However, that dropped into fund balance, a balance of $36,574. So what we need to do is get that out of fund balance and put it into our revenue and expense account for the new fiscal year so we can spend that money. So that's, it's just an administrative-type thing that we need to do. Any questions?
Overall, do we break even?
I actually have some money left, because that was at the end of the year. We had $36,000 left.
Okay. Well, that's what I wasn't clear about.
No, we're not supplementing it.
So after we've paid out, I mean, historically, does it work? How long have we been doing it?
Yes. Um, I checked back.
Yeah. Several... Probably over five years in the mulching and grinding business.
Okay, well, good.
So people just go out there with their pickup truck and purchase mulch?
They can, that's correct.
Yeah. Is that mostly individuals or companies or, do you know?
We don't get DOT, we don't get DOT and things like that, but we do have landscapers and stuff, but mostly residential, to be honest with you.
Okay, questions for Susan?
So at the end of the fiscal year, you know, when we come to you in July and August and ask for, actually, August, September, for reappropriations, this will be on the list to reappropriate the money, because we will have a balance left on. We want to make sure we're able to spend that money each year. So you'll see it again.
Okay, great. Now we'll do 4.5.
So for the restroom project at our Franklitz, we have about, we have, excuse me, $480,000 set aside for that project, and the bids are supposed to cover the base bids. However, speaking with IMs, we are going to have, want to, that will not cover any bid alternatives or contingency, so we think at this time we need to set aside an additional $50,000. And Kyle can fill in some more details, but...
Yes, this, the process, the project is not just a restroom. It's also a sewer main that'll, that will basically allow us to grow that side of the park. So we're putting in an eight-inch sewer main that will go from that restroom and connect to a wall sack manhole, and that will provide our sewer as the rest of that side of the park grows. So the tennis court side, the open hillside, all of that could be gravity-fed. And with the distance we're putting that sewer line in, I have some concerns about needing some contingency funds for the amount of rock that I suspect we will encounter.
Okay, questions? Commissioner Kiger asked me earlier, what was the status of our lease with the state on that property? I told him I thought it had been renewed, but I wasn't sure of the details.
Patiently waiting.
Still patiently waiting.
We've got the verbal approval, but we're just waiting on the signed documents.
Yes.
So it has been approved, and the extension is to 2054, but we actually need to get the document in hand.
Right.
I hope they got past that part on due.
And that's why we've been holding some of these projects, to make sure we can get that approval first.
So how long have you been waiting on that document from the state of North Carolina?
Counting the approval process.
Yeah. Two years?
It's very close to that, probably 22 months, to be honest.
Yeah. Okay, any additional questions on that one? All right, we will move to item 4.6, project ordinance updates for Cabarrus County Operations Center purchase. Susan.
So at your September meeting, we were able to approve the funding for the Operations Center, and all the funding is in place through a budget amendment. We had one administrative part that we did not complete, and that was to get approval to do the project ordinance system, to make that happen. So this is to bring before you three different project ordinances to move the money around so we can account for the Operations Center properly.
Okay, any questions on that one? All righty, and thank you. We will now move to item 4.7, planning and development, proposed text amendment. We're happy to have Susie Morris with us.
We have a series of text amendments. I think there are five total. The First Amendment is pretty much a housekeeping issue. We need to adopt a new set of FEMA maps, and along with those maps, we also need to adopt a new model ordinance that the state has pushed out to us from their emergency management folks. So essentially, the amendment, the text, if you all remember, some of you, in 2015, we adopted a model ordinance. We thought that was going to be the ordinance that would be required for this set of maps, but the state came out with a new one. So we were ahead of the curve, but behind the curve a little bit, because the instructions are based on how to change your 2008 ordinance. So we've worked with the state, worked with our engineer, and we also have approval from emergency management on the draft. So we are ready to move forward with this. The maps will be effective November 16th, 2018, and so we have to have them in place prior to that and hold our public hearing prior to that. So that would occur at your regular meeting this month, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. For the most part, the changes that the state incorporated really are technical changes to codify technical bulletins that we had been using from FEMA.
So are there new maps? I mean, has something changed or...
Yes. So our, we participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, and that is the minimum that you have to participate in, in order to receive federal funding in the event of a significant weather event, like the hurricane that just happened. With that, FEMA puts out the, what they call the NFIP FIRM maps, and those maps are the maps that determine whether or not people have to carry flood insurance. So those maps, the last maps that we had were from 2008, and the state and FEMA have worked together to do additional modeling. So we do have a new set of maps that we are adopting along with the amendment. Those maps have been out since August of 2016, and we did go through an extensive review process. There were also some public input sessions that the state held here, actually here in the multipurpose room. And then the last opportunity for that public input would be during the public hearing that you hold. But we did not receive, sometimes we receive appeals on those maps when people are looking at their individual properties. We did not receive any appeals for any properties in unincorporated Cabarrus County, and we also did not receive any comments on any of the maps. So some areas, we're seeing the floodplain is widening, but in other areas, we are seeing that the floodplain is actually narrowing. In those maps, we have a big set of paper maps that are about as wide as this table. Everything now is online at the NC FRIS system. So we've been help, trying over the last two years to educate the surveyors and the real estate folks on how to use that system, because it is constantly being updated with information.
Yes, sir.
Just, Susie, for the sake of those watching on TV, if I'm a private property and I want to check the updated map, how do I do that?
You would go to the NC FRIS system. It's the North Carolina Flood Risk Mapping System. It's a joint system, and a property owner can type in their property address. It will get them close. Sometimes it's not exactly on the parcel, but it will get them close to that location, and then they can check that. When Florence was heading our way, we did some public outreach through emergency management using that system, and people actually were sharing the link and saying, "Hey, go check your property." So it's not difficult to use. It's just like any other, kind of like our GIS system would be. You put in the address, and then you can see what the maps show, whether or not you're, you have, depending on colors, whether or not there's floodplain located on your property.
Why would there be a, over the last 10 years, why would there be a change in the floodplain on our property?
Based on development that is happening and a more impervious area being added, it changes the rate at which the water flows, which then sometimes expands the floodplain. If there are storm water controls added, though, in some places, it would lessen the impacts of those waters flowing off of the new properties.
So if you're a property owner and the floodplain has expanded on your property, is there some method of notification, or do you just have to pay attention to that yourself, or how would those property owners know that that change had occurred?
Typically, mortgage companies will go in when FEMA... Typically, mortgage companies will go in, when FEMA releases the new maps, the mortgage companies go in and they notify the property owners if they would need a change to their policy or if they might need to purchase flood insurance. Here at the county, we really are not involved in the insurance side of things. It's more in helping people to make sure that they're not constructing in the floodplain, and if that is their only option, that they are using the correct construction methods so that hopefully there is less damage or no damage if there is a significant weather event or flooding.
So in the GIS system for the county, there's something called a property report. I think I'm getting the right name of it. And when you go pull your property in, you can pick the D and the tax card and all those things, that's one of those choices. On that form, there's a thing that says floodplain, I think it says 100-year, 500, maybe floodplain. Are those updated as those maps are updated, or are they?
Yes, it will be updated. So the effective date is the 16th. This is actually the data that we are supposed to be using now. So I was talking to our GIS folks about going ahead and pushing that data to our internal public GIS website. But the FRIS system is the best resource for anybody that deals with property or for individual citizens, because that is, everything that the state has touched makes it into that system without the lag time with the paper copies that end up moving around. I know Commissioner Morris has received several notifications based on these maps, and every time they change a map, you know, it takes it a while for those paper copies to get out, but you can turn on different layers in that FRIS system, and it shows if that map amendment or that letter of map change has been approved.
Okay, additional questions? All righty, thank you. And we move to item 4.8, additional proposed text amendments.
Yes, so this series of amendments are kind of to address changing conditions here in the county. So the first one that we have is for Chapter 10, and it is part of the parking and loading standards. We currently require a 24-foot access road. That would be for commercial properties that are developing. As you know, our ordinance allows some uses that are of a commercial nature that are allowed in more rural areas. So what this particular amendment is proposed to do is the Fire Marshal's Office allows a 20-foot access road instead of the 24. This would allow the Fire Marshal's Office to determine if someone made that type of request, if they could use the 20 feet instead of the 24 feet, without having to go to our Board of Adjustment for a variance to do that. Right now, because our ordinance says it's 24, they're required to do the 24. But on the flip side of that, the Fire Marshal's ordinance also says that it can be more than 24 feet. But this would allow them the flexibility, again, as long as that person presents evidence that it would still meet fire, fire and life safety codes, that they would be able to approve the use for 20 feet. And this is only where, say, if it was connecting parking areas, parking areas would still be required to have the 24 feet in between the parking stalls so that people are not backing out into each other. So this would just be interior access roads. Any questions on that one? The next one is in Chapter 14, and this is a proposed amendment to allow additional time for structures destroyed by natural causes. Our ordinance currently says that if you have a structure that is destroyed by a natural cause, so fire, wind, earthquake, things like that, that you have up to one year to rebuild that structure. We have found that as things get more complicated and people deal with insurance companies, that really is not enough time for that to happen. So what we are proposing in this amendment is that the time would be extended to 18 months, and it also would be based on a building permit instead of completing construction. With the issuance of the building permit, as long as someone continues to do inspections periodically, that building permit keeps its active status. So this seems like a much more reasonable route for us to go. So they would have 18 months, and then that building permit, as long as they periodically receive the inspections like they needed to, the zoning permit could also be renewed as part of that. So it would allow some more flexibility for them to build back and to deal with the insurance company or fundraise or, you know, whatever they needed to do to put the building back. And then the last one, the Chapter 2 amendments and Chapter 7 amendments are tied together. So the proposal for Chapter 2 is to amend the definitions of accessory structure and also accessory dwelling unit. Our ordinance currently calls those out as being subordinate to the primary structure. What we have seen in Cabarrus County, when Mr. Thrift and I worked on this probably about five years ago, the average house size in Cabarrus County at that time was 2,200 square feet. So what we put into the ordinance was that you could have 50% of the square footage or 1,100 square feet, whichever was less. We are seeing now that the house size in Cabarrus County is increased significantly, and we are seeing a lot of requests for accessory structures and accessory dwelling units that are over that size. So the proposed amendment would allow additional flexibility, and it would also allow flexibility in placement of those particular structures. With the accessory dwelling units, they would still be required to be located to the side or to the rear of the home, but if somebody wanted to build a garage, and the only place that they could place that would be in front of the building or in front of their house, this would now allow them to do that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
But it's still limiting the size?
It limits the size to 50% of the base that is listed on the tax card, so that we have some type of control to look at or point to. And then that would, that would be how we would determine the 50% of the square footage.
So why are we limiting the size?
To keep it somewhat in.
We took out the word subordinate, so we're no longer comparing it to the residential structure any longer.
The accessory dwelling is the only one that is still subject to that. Accessory.
Okay.
Accessory structures like garages or barns would not be subject to that. It's the.
So it's all in the dwelling?
Correct.
Okay.
And we also changed it to allow for 25%. If there's a business, say a corporate business, that wanted to have an apartment as an accessory structure, as long as it's interior to that facility, we did increase that amount so that they could have 25% of that structure. Could be those little corporate apartments or, you know, security-type facilities if they needed them.
So if I had 50 acres, and it was considered one parcel, and I had a 2,000-square-foot home, and somewhere off to the back of the property, I wanted to build a garage to store my collection of old automobiles, that would apply. I could only build 1,000 square feet, 50% of the.
No, that would only be if it was an accessory dwelling unit.
An accessory dwelling, so if it was.
Correct. If it's just, just what we consider an accessory building. So a garage or, you know, a shop.
Right.
Something like that, then it would not be subject to that 50%. And that 50% is really to try to, no.
No?
No.
It's never been that way?
It used to be, you couldn't build larger than the principal structure, without exceptions.
Correct, without seeking a variance.
Right. And so is it still that way?
This would allow people to build accessory structures, not accessory dwelling units.
Right.
That could be larger than the primary structure. Yes.
Okay, other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we move now to item 5, approval of the regular meeting agenda, and you all have a copy of that before you. Do I hear a motion to approve that as presented, or does anyone see amendments that need to be made? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the regular meeting agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. We do have need of a closed session tonight, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation and economic development per North Carolina General Statute 143-318, point 11A, 3 and 4. Okay, we have a motion and a second that would go into closed session. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. We are now in closed session. Thank you.